After the agenda portion of the meeting, we have ordinances on second reading. One, in order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5, Wage Step. We have ordinances on first reading. One, in order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title II, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.64, Department of Police, Adding Section 2.64.145, Special Law Enforcement Officer Class II. We then have resolutions. One, approved agenda amendments. Two, approved payrolls from 1-519 to 1-1819, and the 1-1919 to 2-119. Three, authorized refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four has been pulled. Five, authorized application acceptance and execution of grants for 2018-2019 for 2018-2019 pedestrian safety grant. Six, authorized application acceptance and execution of grant agreement for 2019 for 2019 Safe and Secure Communities Grant Program, Grant Number 191213, Amount $60,000. Seven, approved amendment resolution R.121836, An additional $30,000 for ongoing tax appeal for 2018 for Division of Assessments with Oakland Longo, Marandos, and Dukes, LLP, for 2018 Special Counsel for Tax Appeal Division of Assessments for $195,000 to $225,000. Number eight, authorized purchase by police department under New Jersey State approved co-op, Number 65 MCESCCPS, The Educational Services Commission in Jersey Pricing System, from CW Government Incorporated for one Microsoft Surface and Pro Computer, not to exceed $2,025.45. Number nine, approved award of contract, gold type business machine doing business as GTPM for proprietary software licenses, 31 info cop license renewals, 12-month period commencing January 30th, 2019 and ending January 29th, 2020, not to exceed $8,137.50 non pro tunc. Number 10, approved professional service agreement with Power DMS Incorporated for power suite subscription for the police department, 12-month period commencing February 23rd, 2019 and ending February 22nd, 2020, not to exceed $6,264. Number 11, approved award of grant for rehabilitation home improvements, one grant for Barleen Amity Room, 34 North Pennington Road, not to exceed $29,985. Number 12, approved amendment resolution R.101650, Additional amount of $2,193 authorized purchase by police department under state contract A85943/T. They have 1776 Data Communications Network Services from Verizon Business Network Services Incorporated for private satellite service, not to exceed $2,193. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% more of the amount of the original contract. Number 13, approved request for use of city property requested by Community Options Incorporated, Cupid's Chase 5K Run, Duble Park, Tractor Pavilion for Cupid's Chase National 5K Race Saturday, February 9th, 2019, 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM Pavilion, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM Track. Number 14, approved request for use of city property requested by SuperSonics Track Club, Location Memorial Stadium, Track and Field, New Jersey AAU High School District Championship Event, Track and Field, Eight, Sunday, April 7th to 14th, 2019, and Saturday, April 20th, 2019, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Friday, June 21st, 2019 is from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Number 15, approved request for use of city property enclosure of streets requested by CGI Racing, Location Duble Park, Seminary Place, George Street, College Avenue, for the 10th Avenue Night Apparation Marathon and 8K Race, Date, time, Sunday, April 14th, 2019, from 5:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Park usage, Saturday, April 13th, 2019, Sunday, April 14th, 2019, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Seminary Place Street closing. Sunday, April 14th, 2019, from 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM, George Street closure. Sunday, April 14th, 2019, from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM, College Avenue closure, police extra duty. Number 16, approved request for street closing requested by Rutgers University, Department of Major Events and Programs. Location College Avenue between Bartlett and Senior Streets, Annual Hot Dog Day Event for Rutgers students, Wednesday, April 17th, 2019, Rain day is Thursday, April 18th, 2019, 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM, police extra duty. Number 17, approved request for use of city property requested by Rutgers University, Rutgers Global, location is Duble Park Pavilion, grassy area around Pavilion, The End of Term Celebration for Rutgers University International Students, Wednesday, May 8th, 2019, Rain day Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, Time is 4:00 AM to 7:30 PM. Number 18, approved request for use of city property requested by Livingston Elementary School in New Brunswick Board of Education, location Youth Sport Complex, Baseball and Soccer Fields, Lower Field for Livingston Elementary School, Annual Field Day, Friday, June 7th, 2019, Rain day is Friday, June 14th, 2019, time is 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Number 19, approved request for use of city property requested by Tree of Life Church, Location War Memorial Park for religious event, Saturday, June 8th, July 6th, August 10th, 2019, Rain day is Sundays, June 9th, July 7th, and August 11th, 2019, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Number 20, approved amendment of resolution R.121776, Reason extension through 2019, approved relaxation of city noise ordinance requested by Langen Engineering, Reason construction activities on the residences at Eastern and Hamilton, 78, 92, and 94 Eastern Avenue, Saturdays excluding holidays through the calendar year of 2019, time is 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Number 21, approved amendment of resolution R.121838, Change order number two, Guard State Highway Products, Furnishing Deliver 2018 Regulatory Science Risk Assessment Number 95-18, Amount $246. Approval of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% more of the amount of the original contract. Number 22, approved amendment of resolution R.121775, Reason extension through 2019, Approved Relaxation of City Noise Ordinance requested by Langen Engineering, Construction work of the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center, Health Food Center, Nine Livingston Avenue, Saturdays excluding holidays through the calendar year of 2019, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Number 23, approved award of contract and authorization to rebid for one chemical powered activity carbon, Furnishing Deliver Chemicals for bulk feed facilities with Career Line Company, Chemtrade Chemicals US LLC, Utovar USA Incorporated, Georgia's Coin Chemical Company USA LLC, Baltimore Plant LLC. 12-month period commencing February 7th, 2019 and ending February 6th, 2020. Specification Number 106-2019W, not to exceed $1,075,677.20. Number 24, approved request for use of city property requested by the Lighthouse Scripture Fellowship, Location War Monument Park, preaching and casting out literature, Dates, Saturday, 2019, February 9th, 1623, March 29th, 162330, April 6th, 132027, May 4th, 111825, June 1st, 1522, 29th, July 13th, 2027, August 3rd, 172431, September 7th, 142128, October 5th, 121926, November 29th, 162330, December 7th, 142128, time is 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Number 25, approved authorization to advertise, The Furnishing Deliver 1, 2019, 20 passenger vehicle with wheelchair lift, and 2 wheelchair station senior citizen resource center, specification number 748-19P. Number 26, approved transfer of appropriation reserves for 2018 municipal budget. Number 27, approved off-prem draft of 50/50 at Oakland Longo Esquire 40th Power Conference for the September 30th Final Board Association, Date, Wednesday, April 24th, 2019. Number 28, approved amendment of resolution R.061819, Reason to pay the final legal fees in the amount of $1,580 to Benedict Edelman for Police Director Anthony Tripudo in the matter of Arthur Anderson et al. versus the City of New Brunswick, $49,432.50 to $51,012.50. Number 29, approved amendment of resolution R.011882, Reason to pay $1,365 for interpreting services with Elsa Gonzalez doing business as Exacto Spanish Interpreter LLC for interpreters for the municipal court, not to exceed $1,365, specification number 656-18RFP. Number 30, approved award of contracts for the interpreters for the municipal court with Judas K. Grasper, Parat Plus Translations Incorporated, ASL Interpreter Referral Service Incorporated, Language Services Associates, Elsa Gonzalez doing businesses at Exacto Spanish Interpreter LLC, and Luis Cigarte. Term 12-month period commencing February 7th, 2019 and ending February 6th, 2020. Specification Number 730-19RFP, not to exceed $50,000. Number 31, approved award of contract with Absolute Fire Protection Company Incorporated for fire aerial ladder service repair services, 12-month period commencing February 8th, 2019 and ending February 7th, 2020. Specification Number 728-18D, not to exceed $20,000. Number 32, approved award of contract with On-Site Fleet Service Incorporated for emergency vehicles parts and repair services for the fire department, 12-month period commencing February 8th, 2019 and ending February 7th, 2020. Specification Number 727-18D, not to exceed $100,000. Number 33, approved award of contract with Sal Electric Incorporated for electrical maintenance and repair services, term 12-month period commencing February 7th, 2019 and ending February 6th, 2020, which can be extended on a year basis for up to two additional years, specification number 734-19D, not to exceed $153,000. Number 34, approved amendment of resolution R.011978, Additional dates in February, approved relaxation of city noise ordinance and road closures requested by Gilbane Building Company. The reason is jump the tower crane to its final elevation at 90 New Street for the standard at New Brunswick Project Streets would include New Street between Livingston Avenue and George Street, Saturday and Sunday, February 2nd and 3rd, 2019, non pro tunc. Alternate dates, Saturday and Sunday, February 9th and 10th, 2019, hours 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Number 35, approved relaxation of city noise ordinance requested by Amp Quick Crane, Reason crane placement as one Robert Wood Johnson place for the purpose of moving ductwork. Dates, Saturday, February 16th, 2019, alternate date is Saturday, February 23rd, 2019, hours 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Number 36, approved request for street closing requested by the State Theater in Livingston Avenue between New and George Streets for the Annual Family Day, Monday, February 18th, 2019, 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM, police extra duty. Number 37, approved resolution authorizing emergency interconnection agreement between New Jersey American Water Company Incorporated and the City of New Brunswick. Number 38, approved resolution authorizing emergency interconnection agreement between the Township of East Brunswick and the City of New Brunswick. Number 39, approved off-prem draft of 50/50 at Rutgers Nielsen Dining Hall, 177 Ryder Lane, New Brunswick, for fellowship for Metler House Incorporated, date Saturday, April 6th, 2019. Number 40, approved award of contract with Associated Humane Societies Incorporated for kennel services for the Division of Animal Control, 12-month period commencing January 1st, 2019 and ending September 31st, 2019, and thereafter for an additional 12 months to the city so desired, specification number 723-18RFP, not to exceed $75,317.55. Fair and open, non pro tunc. Number 41, authorized tax collector to transfer over payments on several tax and utility accounts. Item for discussion and public comment.
Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Here.
Council President Anderson?
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice would create sufficient notice of time and place in conduct of all public meetings of the Municipal Council of the City of New Brunswick has been filed with the City Clerk, has been placed on the appropriate billboard in the lobby of City Hall of New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely the Hall News Tribune. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence, if you will, for our men and women serving in our armed forces, for all those throughout the world in the United States who either lost their lives or lost to live. Thank you. For the minutes.
Do you accept the minutes?
Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. Record of correspondence by the City Clerk.
Item 1, a letter from Penn Jersey Environmental Consulting regarding a remedial action protectiveness slash biennial certification form for 290 George Street. Item 2, an application from PSCNG regarding the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Flood Hazard Area Individual Permit. Item 3, a public notice that on February 21st, 2019, at 8:00 PM, the zoning board of the Township of East Brunswick will hold a public hearing. Item 4, a letter from the City of New Brunswick Zoning Board of Adjustment regarding a notice appearing to property owners on January 28th, 2019, at 7:30 PM. Item 5, a letter from the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection in regards to a 1,550 gallon, number 2, heating oil underground storage tank system at 262 Hale Street. Item 6, a copy of the 2018 Table of Equalized Evaluations as amended by the Tax Court of New Jersey from the Division of Taxation. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you. We have no public hearings. We have ordinances on second reading. Number 1, in order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5, Wage Step. Any member of the public would like to speak? We have up to five minutes. Anybody see? Please come up to the microphone. One time up, and up to five minutes, it's a running clock. If you would, just please identify yourself with the record, name and address, please. Whoever would like to go first?
Yes. I am Maria Powell, 101 Zebra Way, New Brunswick, New Jersey. And she's also my neighbor. We are here as concerned citizens of the city of New Brunswick. And we mainly want to, we are new in the area. I came from the city of San Bernardino, California after the shooting. And she came with her son from Utah. So we've been in this city for a little bit over three years. So we have a few concerns. This is our first experience coming here to the city council meeting. It was highly recommended to us to come to observe and maybe to get familiar with the guidelines of the city council meetings, so like that we can address the issues that we have in our community property.
Okay, right now, we're just talking about this ordinance on wage step.
I'm sorry.
Did you wait for the public comment on that?
Do I need to put my name somewhere, our name?
No, no, you can just come up later.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
We'll apologize.
That's okay.
Okay.
Thank you. This is on the wage step ordinance.
Hi, good evening. My name is Yolanda, and he's our mentor. He's a Bajadosis.
I'll be translating for her.
I came back, I come before in October.
Yo vinia anteriormente en octubre. So I came back in October last year.
Para exponer el tema de la falta de área acondicionado en la escuela Roosevelt, Lincoln de la Centaria y Redstone School.
All right, this is about the wage step ordinance only. So you can come back again, and we have a public comment here. It's not about this specific law, this ordinance, about wage step.
Estamos hablando ahora mismo sobre la ordenanza que está por cuesta para el reembolde de salario. So ahora solo estás hablando sobre eso. Si usted quiere exponer algo más, en el área hay una sección que es para militantes de la comunidad. Ahí usted puede venir y exponer su clase. Okay, le dejamos saber.
Okay. Gracias.
Okay, just on the wage step. Anybody have any comments or the wage step ordinance itself?
So para ordenanza como es salario.
Hola, mi nombre es Renanda Cruz. My name is Renanda Cruz. I'm a student of the New Labor Organization. Para nosotros el link importante es esta ordenanza con el reembolde de salario. This ordinance is very important to us. Porque ya lo tenemos que esperar hasta diciembre que se renuevan las licencias. Because then we wouldn't have to wait until December when the licenses are renewed. Si algún empleador debe a su trabajador, supongamos en enero o febrero. So for instance, if an employer owes their employee either from January or se pueda tomar acción cerca de la licencia, actually, he doesn't want to pay. Entonces estoy aquí porque, para darle las gracias a todos ustedes. To thank you all. Para que nos ayuden con esta ordenanza, ya que la ciudad es muy importante. So that you can help us with this ordinance, being that the city is very important. Ya que nosotros como organizaciones nos ayuda mucho que ustedes trabajen junto con nosotros.
And just as also as an organization, it really is a real big support for us that you guys help us in this.
Y yo espero que esto realmente ustedes la modifiquen, la puede, se pueda pasar.
And it is my hope that hopefully you guys can modify this and it can be passed.
Para que nosotros podamos ayudar a los trabajadores cuando tienen problemas, no pasa nada.
So that we can help the employees whenever they have a wage step problem. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else on the ordinance? City, city not?
Who's the ordinance?
Second. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have an ordinance on first reading, in order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title II, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.64, Department of Police, Adding Section 2.64.145, Special Law Enforcement Officer Class II.
Move the ordinance setting down February 20th, 6:30 PM, same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. We have resolutions 1 through 41, not including number four. Anyone from the Republic would like to speak on the resolutions? Please grab them, five minutes, one time up, please.
Good evening, members of the council, Charles Crandall, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Starting with number seven, the Oakland Longo Special Counsel for Tax Appeals. Can you tell me why they need an additional 30 grand?
More.
Okay, from last year, there were more than anticipated?
I don't know, I think yesterday, I would probably say yes.
They rebounded last year.
Right, right, and so this year, Oakland has been hired again for the same thing. Is the city expecting that number to again be over $200,000? Or is it going to go down because of the rebound?
We hope it's going to go down, to be honest. I don't see Mr. Duchesne out here, because I don't see Mr. Duchesne no other. But as Mr. Egan and Mr. Anderson indicated, it's just a result of increased appeals and those matters have to be adjudicated. And unfortunately, lawyers who handle this on our behalf do it on a time basis, and what time they put in, the money involved.
Sure, sure, and they do that before the tax court, right? The county.
Let's ask about the lawsuit that's been recently settled. I see Resolution 928 is legal bill's final legal fees for the police director's lawyer. I'll point out that the police director is not here tonight, has never been here in the entire time that he, ever since he got rehired in, I guess it was 2010. And so his bills alone are $51,000 that are going to be paid by the taxpayers of New Brunswick. I know the case was settled for $350,000 that's going to be spread among the 20-plus towns that are part of the joint insurance fund. But I also know that Mayor Cahill accumulated a tremendous legal bill for this case and one other case alleging similar racism and corruption in the police department. Has anybody added up the total cost of all of the legal bills? Because I know the settlement's only $350,000, but I would venture to guess that the legal bills for everyone far exceed that. Does anybody know how much this lawsuit costs the taxpayers in New Brunswick?
I don't.
Maybe the law department would know, could you guess?
I don't believe they have exactly what they have.
Oh, I haven't totally.
Okay, well, I would like to know, I'll follow up. 937-938 is two emergency interconnection agreements. And if I read the resolution correct, this is just sort of codifying existing arrangements? Is that fair to say?
That's fair to say, yes, just in case emergencies always come up. But anybody else, I think that's basically it, basically.
Okay, and the two interconnections that exist, they're not being utilized right now? It's only for emergencies, and the city is able to provide its own water to its people in the town right now?
I believe that's true. Yes, sir?
Thank you. And then finally, on the last page here, I see 940 is a contract for 12 months with Associated Humane Societies for kennel services. And I'd like to learn a little bit more about this vendor and their track record. Is this the first time the city is using them?
I don't believe so.
I think Mr. Barber might answer that, but I know we've been using them for a short time already.
Mr. Barber?
Yes, Council President, we have been using them since August of 2018.
Okay, so far, so good, they're delivering what the city needs?
They are.
Okay, is this the one based in Newark?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barber, thank you, council, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else, just on the resolutions?
Who's the resolution?
Second. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes. Councilmember Fleming, if you could talk about that right there.
Yes, you guys? No, no.
I just want to acknowledge you guys who participated at the State Theater Family Day on the night too. And also, I just want to recognize that to really lost a member of our community who had been very loyal and committed to Esperanza. She was a member of Esperanza Project, who came here with plenty of time to talk about issues affecting our community and advocating for municipal activities or anything that you could think of, she was here. Her name was Mirsha Jamiero, and she goes to battle against cancer. So I just wanted to recognize her effort as a true warrior in all aspects of her life, and may she rest in peace.
Thank you. Thank you.
February is, as we know, Black History Month. I'm not going to give anybody quizzes at any time. But I just wanted, because this year is like really becoming historic in the candidates right now, such a diverse field right now, the people that will be running for president in 2020, 2020. And I just wanted to highlight one person that we don't hear a name of, Ms. Shroen Chisholm. And she ran as the first one, she was the first African-American candidate to run as a serious candidate in 1972. She lived from 1924 until 2005. I just wanted to lift up her name, you know, because a lot of people forget now because we've had Barack Obama, we've had Jesse Jackson on her. But she was one of the first ones, despite of, in 1972, when that was unheard of. That's all that was said. Thank you.
I'd also like to bring up the name of Barbara Jordan. She's a woman that I admire very much, she's usually from the South, and that's the way for it. Also like to remember that this 100th anniversary with Paul Robeson. There's a lot of things going on in New Brunswick, stay tuned for a lot of things coming up on that. Anybody else? Okay, we'll open it up to the public for their comments, please. Again, you have one time up there, up to five minutes. If you just give your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it.
Hi, yes, standing on 33777 Street. First, I'd like to start off on the last meeting on January 16th, due to where we were talking about the city paying $135,000 to keep French Street, George Street, and Remsen Avenue clean. Mr. Tom, will you please tell me, did you see me the next day taking pictures of French Street while you were in the city car?
I recall seeing your French, I recall.
Will you please tell me, was French Street clean?
French Street had some debris on it, I can't say it was 100% clean though.
Oh, believe me, like I said, for you to be paying $135,000, I don't think this is clean at all. Garbage all over, mattresses all over. Now, now, do you see that's clean? Do any of you? So then tell me why are you paying $135,000 to the parking authority to have clean and it's not being clean? But wow, this thing, I can say, wow, you can make a program for the homeless. But wow, this thing, I can say, wow, you can make a program for the homeless. What, pay them, they can do community service.
Is that part of the clean community area, does anybody know that she's pointing out? That's supposed to clean, can somebody help me in the city?
You said you market it all.
We have a special area that the clean community is supposed to clean. I want to know if that area there, as she's showing, is part of that area. Can anybody in the city tell me?
I don't think so, I can't be certain, I think it stops.
There's only a certain area that the-
Well, please tell me what area it is.
I'm asking them to help us find out. But there's an area that we're, that the clean community cleans up the French Street, then it stops. So you might, that might be the area that's not being cleaned by the clean community team, is what I'm saying.
Well, as I know, it was all the way to Alexander Street where French Street was supposed to be cleaned.
I think that's not part of the clean community zone. Does anybody here in New Brunswick anymore?
Well, how can you tell me it's not? You don't know, and no one else is speaking about it.
I'm going to find out for you. It should be clean no matter where it is, in my opinion. I'm impressed with you, we should have it cleaned up.
Only place that's what, that's clean is George Street. Wow, Remsen Avenue has been cleaned, like I said, that's a lot of money, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for you to be paying the parking authority? Wow, open up a program, what, you're tiding the homeless out begging for money? What, pay them to do the cleaning, do something like Holland Park does, where they be clean instead of paying money?
I agree too, I mean, it should be clean, but I think maybe the money you're speaking of is not earmarked for that particular area. But you're right.
I agree, it should be clean, but I don't know as far as the hundred and thirty-five thousand. And I don't know if that area that you're speaking of is part of that area, but it should be clean nonetheless, is what I'm saying.
Well, due to where the store owners said it's supposed to be cleaned. And then my next attention is in the same area, that's where I witnessed the situation. I talked to the fire department also, due to where I will speak to traffic. Is there some way that the traffic authority can speed up the light for Handy and Jersey Avenue? Due to where, as you can see, I'm in how completely traffic is backed up. Yesterday, how I witnessed where, what, the fire trucks are being trapped on inside and they can't even get through, due to where life or death pray doesn't happen. But yes, how will the fire department, any rescue squad going to get through? Due to where, what, is, due to where that light is so slow. So is it possible that the city can look into changing?
Sure, the traffic, we should look into it, Mr. Crandall.
That's, that intersection is controlled by the county, it's not a city jurisdiction.
Okay, well, we'll look into it anyway, give our thoughts to the county.
Okay, also, due to where we're into a new year, okay, I hope to see the flashing light needed in front of middle school on Livingston Avenue?
Come.
I'm sorry, just.
Oh, yeah, 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 like I said, you're wasting my time, what, what is going to be done? Due to where you said it was going to be done?
Still going to be done.
When, when? You said once the new year came in that it was going to be done, this is February. We've been waiting since, what, May of last year?
The, once the budget become real, we have the capital appropriations involved. We're drafting the capital appropriations for those functions for this year. So when it becomes through, when the budget gets approved, then we can then go after bid.
And then also, for the pedestrian walk sign, if you can have it replaced on the corner of Somerset and Lewis, due to where that was a big crash, took him down, the big crash, that was Christmas Eve. We're running to the two houses there. Yes, if you can please replace the signs, due to where you have kids walking through there also. And then my question is, who's taking Mr. Patterson's place?
Right now, we have a company working on that, right?
Yes, there's a search.
Due to where out of the last two traffic meetings, no one from engineering, no one to report what is to be done. So yes, I hope to see someone there tomorrow, so, due to where all these are traffic related, and I can speak to someone.
Okay.
But also, yeah, I just wanted to make you aware that I am a member of our C board with the Esperanza Project. And on the 25th of last month, we went in January, 25th, we did a survey in the area of French Street, there's community people and members, and we did a walkthrough the area of French, including some areas of town, to see the conditions of that area. Because they will be working some initiatives as a community to enhance and to address some of the challenges that are happening on French Street. So I just wanted to let you know that there's people that are working on that at the community level.
Oh, yes, I will say also, I've been working too, Miss Patterson told you, where I've been volunteering, passing out the letters in Spanish, you know, for her. So yes, I'm interested in, like I said, making New Brunswick cool clean, so yes. Any voluntary, just let me know, I'd show you participate, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chris Roberts, I live on 272 Hamilton Street. I'm a Rutgers student. So I had a concern about the intersection at George Street and Somerset, specifically regarding the three crosswalks that I believe are there, two on George Street and one on Somerset respectively. I've noticed during my time at Rutgers, just walking around in that area, you know, near like, you know, some of the buildings over there, the Barnes &amp; Noble, that the intersection's quite dangerous at times for pedestrians, like residents of the city and students constantly crossing that intersection. And the only thing, the only safety measure really there is the stop sign, I believe, on Somerset. So I was just curious if there was any way there could maybe like be a light built there, two lights or something? Because there's always cars going through, people crossing the streets.
You're talking about the Republican pass, the railroad?
Yeah, it's next to the, there's Somerset to George. Yeah, it's down the street from Barnes &amp; Noble.
Those power streets?
No, George, that portion of George is the county.
Yeah, well, that's the county.
Do you know the county units this morning?
Do you guys know how much it would cost to build lights there? Would the county pay for that?
Does their road make that?
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Gracias por el espacio.
Thank you for the space.
Mi nombre es Yolanda Hernandez.
My name is Yolanda Hernandez.
Vengo a traerles y exponerles el tema de la falta de aire acondicionado en las escuelas de New Brunswick.
I came here to expose the conversation about the lack of air conditioning in elementary school like Lincoln, Roosevelt, and Lyndon Stine.
Aja, perfecto, son tres escuelas que no tienen aire acondicionado.
Perfect, it's three schools that don't have air conditioning.
Según la historia, esas escuelas fueron construidas entre 1910 y 1930.
According to the story, according to the history, that those schools were built between 1910 and 1930.
Y esto quiere decir que los buildings son demasiado antiguos.
This tells us that the buildings are pretty much, they're pretty old.
Pero siguen dando servicio como escuelas de gobierno.
But they're still servicing as public schools.
Yo he estado buscando información sobre el tema porque es preocupante ya que yo soy una madre que está siendo directamente afectada.
I had been researching online to look for more information, being that I'm a parent who's affected by the situation.
Y aquí también me acompañan más papás que-
Here, yeah, there's other parents that come with me.
Que están afectados por la situación tan difícil.
That are also affected by the situation.
Y en la investigación que yo hice encontré un informe.
And during the investigation that I did, I found a report.
De la Universidad de Harvard, entre otras universidades.
Understood by Harvard University, among other universities as well.
Quienes analizaron el resultado de los exámenes en diez millones de estudiantes.
Who analyzed the results of ten million students?
Durante, por diez años estuvieron haciendo evaluación.
During ten years, they were doing evaluation.
En los Estados Unidos.
In the United States.
Y cuando yo miré este reporte, me preocupé más.
I was worried for.
Por las consecuencias tan graves y tan importantes que tiene el calor en los estudiantes.
Because of the consequences and the results that the lack of air conditioning has on students.
Este reporte dice que el calor hace tan difícil que los niños se concentren y esto conlleva a que los estudiantes estén distraídos y muy agitados.
So this report shows that the heat makes it hard for our students to concentrate, that he needs to be more, for students to be more distracted, agitated, and difficult for them to focus.
Según los expertos calcularon, que por cada cero punto cincuenta cinco grados de la temperatura promedio durante el año, ocurre una caída del aprendizaje del uno por ciento en cada estudiante.
Experts, was calculated for each increase of zero point fifty-five degrees in the average temperature during the year, a fall of one percent occurs in learning.
Son los estudiantes durante el verano se quejan de caluroso focarte al igual que los maestros.
During the summer, the students complain about the heat in schools and also the teachers.
Mi hijo es un niño afectado que durante el verano dice, me duele la cabeza, me duele el estómago.
My son is the one affected by this as well. He tells me during the summer that he said hurts, his stomach hurts, and he does not feel well.
Ellos viven ese problema durante cada año que viene el ciclo escolar y ellos saben que tienen que pasar por ese problema.
The students live through this during the school year, the summers fall in during the school year, and they know that they have to continue living this throughout the year.
Nosotros, los padres entendemos que lo de las escuelas no es exactamente su trabajo.
As parents, we understand that the school is not necessarily your job.
Pero también tenemos muy en cuenta que como concejales están muy bien informados de las necesidades básicas.
But we are aware that as councilors, you are very well informed of the basic needs of the city.
Y también queremos hacer, recordar, que hay algunos concejales que durante la campaña dijeron que mejorarían las escuelas.
And I also want to remind you that during the, during the meetings previously, yes, the councilors also said that they would improve, or they would do something to improve those schools.
Y también sabemos que usted, el señor Iga, es parte del SDA.
And we are aware that Mr. Iga is part of the SDA.
This is Mr. Iga. Oh. I'm confused, it's a sad sign, but I try to work day by day, and then I want to know everyone.
Yes, I'm with you.
Okay, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Es un problema que necesitamos que por favor consideren.
So it's a problem that we want you to please consider.
Ayudar en este asunto.
So hopefully this matters.
Está complicado para nuestros pequeños estudiantes.
That is very complicated for our young students.
Ya que todos aspiramos a querer tener buenos líderes en el futuro.
Being that we all aspire to have future leaders.
Creo y considero que tenemos que tener unas bases muy muy buenas, fundamentadas, para que ellos en su aprendizaje temprano ocupen, estén sinceramente concentrados y desarrollarse.
I think, I think we should consider that they should have a base or a foundation where they can have, they can have a space to where they can concentrate.
Y esto.
We got a draft update five minutes ago.
Okay, quiero agradecer su tiempo, y no es un comentario, es una necesidad que tenemos que trabajar todos juntos con la solución. Son dos mil doscientos niños afectados en las escuelas.
It's about two thousand students affected throughout the schools.
Gracias, thank you.
Like you said, I'm sure the Board of Education would like to hear all that too, and we'll remind them all that.
I'll just say one thing, I appreciate your, you know, we all want to have the best schools in our town, without a doubt. And New Brunswick's been pretty fortunate, you know, we're an average school district, and that's why the SDA is where we're at. We funded, the funding for average school district areas for new schools. And New Brunswick has done very well, we had, we had three new schools in the past five or seven years. We want more, don't get me wrong, but we, we're always pushing for newer schools and more funding. And, you know, New Brunswick is always on the forefront, and we're always trying to get more things built and more things done here in New Brunswick. But there are so many other average school districts with many schools, like Patterson, like Perthamboy, like, right now, we're building one in Trenton High School. All these different areas of New Jersey, we're funding, you know, we're going to build a high school in Perthamboy, it's going to be over two hundred million dollars next year. So as I understand where you're at, but we're certainly going to get there sooner or later with the new school. It takes time, government takes a long time, I hate to tell you that, but it does. And especially the funding process for the schools. It's something that we're going to have to address in the next year or two to stay in New Jersey, that's for sure. So it's all about money, and it's all about time. I'm sorry.
Así mientras tanto, ustedes trabajan haciendo lo suyo y nosotros los padres vamos a trabajar haciendo, impulsando que haya un cambio y tengo mucha esperanza que no lleve tantos años.
All right, so in the meantime, while you do get your work done, us as parents, we're going to continue advocating for this, so that we can solve this problem.
Can you hand off this presentation to the Board of Education, right?
Ahí va la Junta de Educación, esos son los que tienen que-
Everyone, everyone, I go to there.
Just one more thing, the SDA board meeting, first Wednesday of every month, today was the meeting this morning, there's a public forum there, there's always people telling that they want more schools built in their town also. That, they're the people that are discharged, that are-
At SDA?
Se puede participar en la reunión y es una, ahí no pueden, la comunidad hablar, y usted pueda también caminar por la escuela, así que no ponga el condicionado. También tiene otro día por ahí donde poder.
Sí, me estoy preparando para ir para allá. Nunca he hecho una campaña de papás, pero estoy aprendiendo y agradezco mucho su tiempo.
I'm learning, and I appreciate your time.
Y, y, los padres queremos una escuela nueva, así como-
The councilors, we want a new school.
Como la otra escuela, es muy bella, sé que se gastaron casi setenta millones de dólares para esa escuela. Y creo que podemos conseguir más para, para nuestros niños.
And I think that we can gather more for students.
Y a la Junta de Educación voy, everyone, y quiero lograr llamar la atención y concientizar. No es un lujo, es una necesidad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually just wanted to, my name is Danny Taylor. I'm a graduate student at Rutgers University in the School of Education. And here on behalf of the parents of New Brunswick as well, I just wanted to testify to the conditions in the New Brunswick schools. As you said, the New Brunswick school districts are something to be proud of, they're well-run school district. But I had the privilege of doing my student teaching in Paul Robeson and Woodrow Wilson schools this past year. And I wanted to attest to some of the points that were brought up of student learning conditions. That I know, one of the first things I was taught as a student teacher is that there's a difference between having a class in the morning and the afternoon. There's a difference between whether students have come in after recess versus coming from health class. There's a difference between whether students have eaten breakfast or didn't have a coke on the way to school. The conditions of the school, the physical conditions, affect student learning in a very, very tangible way. Focus, concentration, and the learning does suffer. So I just wanted to testify on behalf of the students of New Brunswick and ask if you had any idea of the cost of implementing some kind of emergency solution for providing air conditioning for these schools? Even if it was window units or some kind of temporary fix?
The only thing to just understand is that the buildings are old, and therefore it's an electrical problem also. So it's not the same just putting in an air conditioner, you know, windows, things like that too. But I don't have the cost of it, but we're working on, obviously, new schools as much as we can.
Would you be able to point in the direction of, someone I could ask questions of budget or how you could find that information?
New Brunswick Board of Education.
Board of Ed, okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, good luck to you.
Good evening, once again, Charles Crandall, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Say, you know, first of all, I've been at companies meetings for a long time. I remember when Freeholder Valenti, was also Councilwoman Valenti, was sitting up there. And I was intrigued to learn she'll be not seeking reelection in this year's races. And just, you know, concerned that, want to make sure that New Brunswick is represented on that. that Freeholder Board, you know, as the county seat. I think it's important that this city of almost 6,000 people is represented there. And so I, I did wanna ask, you know, is anybody on the council planning on or interested in, in seeking a seat on the Freeholder Board this year?
I'm not, I don't know about that.
But I want to...
Maybe you can consider it, yeah.
Well, I'll, I'll consider it, thank you.
No, but I wanna make sure like you, that is somebody from New Brunswick, Mr. Cattan, I'll tell you that much.
Well, good. I, I, that, that's my concern first and foremost. I, I wanna make sure New Brunswick continues to be represented and, and I wish Freeholder Valenti well and her will deserve retirement after many, many years of public service. I know she too was a teacher for a long time. Any update on the process for hiring a, a new planning director? I know I've spoken about it a little bit. Is, is there, is it an open process? Are, are applications being accepted? How's it being done?
We'll certainly take applications, but we also have a search committee that's working.
Okay, any idea on a timeframe on when the mayor might make an appointment, make it a choice?
I don't have that, no.
Okay. Is it true that the, the mayor neglected to reappoint a significant number of members to the land use boards, or at least the zoning board?
I don't know.
Could, could you ask the acting planning director? I believe that was an issue at the, the most recent zoning meeting, that there were a number of members who, who had not been reappointed or there was some question?
As far as the boards are concerned, the planning board was fully reappointed. The zoning board, the reappointments were somewhat delayed. And so the information was relayed to the zoning board members without sufficient time to let them know that they were going to be reappointed. In fact, the, the mailing went out the day of the board meeting. We were unaware of, so we carried on the board meeting with the existing members, which were all reappointed as holdover members. And we didn't have to vote on any specific agenda item, we had only six people, so the one big project that was up was carried for the next meeting. So that's the situation as that played out.
Thank you. So they have, the points have, have actually been made?
I received the mail.
Yes, they have.
So a whole bunch of, three people at least.
Thank you. So I thought it was really great when the city began posting information about crimes on a map, a digital map that was available through the city website. This was a really great thing and I've complimented and recommended the department for moving in that direction. And I especially appreciated that folks could sign up to get emails, you know, when there was an incident in a certain area that they were concerned with. And unfortunately, I've noticed that that has stopped happening. Those postings are no longer happening. I suspect it probably has to do with what I've now learned is a, a total transition of the computer-aided dispatch system from New Brunswick Police Department to Rutgers Police Department as of December 10th. Can you please ask Captain Miller to confirm that's, that's what happened and that's why that's no longer taking place?
That's correct. We're working on it. We got everything back into the way it was, but it's definitely a transition, switching over all the computers and all the software systems.
Okay, so the department still intends, still intends to have a, a crime map eventually?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And I did notice it's also affected the posting of accident reports, you know, crash reports. And, and I had a few issues I wanted to discuss, you know, outside of this setting with Captain Miller. Could you ask Captain Miller if he'd be willing to just briefly meet with me to discuss how we can make sure that this transition doesn't result in a downgrade in transparency or any information that, that shouldn't be published be published?
Sure, you can ask him yourself.
The accident reports haven't changed. They're still available online. They haven't changed at all. The format I have it posted as, you can still access every report online in the same website, same, same link, the city website.
Well, it's a little different. I did have a concern I wanted to raise outside of this setting. Would Captain be able to just, just meet with me briefly to discuss that?
Yeah, we can. He might call my office tomorrow and it'll be good.
Tomorrow, sure. You got it. Wanted to also just ask about the Code Blue program. I know a number of nights the guest house has been utilized. Does, does anybody have a, a gauge, an approximate number of how much it costs the city to open up the, the guest house for one night?
Now, just, 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 I don't know if you can answer that question, but we certainly will do that.
Okay, who should I follow up with to?
Mr. Jones.
Sure, sure. Cause I, just for the record, I do think the city can and should do more. I think that 20 degrees is too cold. You know, the, the intent of the Code Blue legislation was to make sure that shelter was available whenever the temperature was below 25 degrees, which is still very, very cold, but, but the city has not chosen to, to use that standard. They use a lower standard and I think we should be using a higher standard for the record. And I guess the final thing, I just want to say, you know, rest in peace to, to Mersha and I think the municipal ID programs is a great thing that the city's done and everybody involved who helped fight for it and helped implement it should be commended. Is there anybody, maybe the mayor's office knows approximately how many municipal IDs have been issued so far by the, the library?
I think we should know, know that last time I looked, I think it was around 200 or something, but one quarter, that'd be higher, two, three, four, five.
It's considerably higher than that, yeah. We're, we're approximately 2,000, I would say.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say 200, so probably there's more.
Excellent. Well, I'd love to get mine, but I will say, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello again. Maria Powell again, thank you very much for the opportunity. This is my neighbor Claudia. Our address is 101 Zebra Way. I am apartment E and she's apartment F. And we are two concerned mothers, two concerned citizens of the city of New Brunswick. Like I said before, we, I came from the city of San Bernardino after the shooting, the unfortunate incident that took place over there. I started my journey here in the city, in the state of New Jersey. Somebody decided to, to drop the ball and became very political between California and New Jersey regarding my case. Long story short, I ended up homeless. I ended up in a homeless women's shelter for several months. After that, the social services department suggested that I should go to the Zebra Way building. They showed me the pictures, they showed me the project. I am allergic to smoke. I am allergic to, whether it's marijuana or any type of smoke, very, very extremely allergic. In the process of moving there, I met my neighbor. She has a 27-year-old autistic child. They told us that the building was smoke-free, alcohol-free, drug-free, and the safety was a primary thing. After the shooting, I have experienced a severe case of PTSD. So my health has declined tremendously after all of this happened. I told everyone that my goal was to work very, very hard to regain my, my strength, my health, to go back to work, cause that's what I wanna do. I used to work for the city of San Bernardino and I worked with them for so many, many, many years. I came here and I'm doing absolutely nothing. So, right now, we have gone through the process of about eight months process. We know that this project is the mayor's project and he loved that project very much. That's what we were told. After several attempts to have the police to go over there, we, we started dealing with the landlord about the smoking and things just got progressively worse. It's been about eight and a half months fight in regards to having the police department there, the fire department there, cause we also had a fire in that building. She is at the end of the building and she gets the, the highest percentage of the smoke. And her son, he is a severe autistic child and anything, any noise, smoke, or anything will throw him out completely. So, after, also December, we tried to talk to the health department here in the city hall and they refused to go over there to do an inspection of health pass. So anyways, we got to the point now where because of this, the fumes from the marijuana, I've already ended up in the hospital twice because of the allergy of cigarettes and marijuana. Jonathan has fell twice. And the second time, he opened his face, his right eye, I mean his left eye, and he's suffered this injury, horrible, horrible injury, and he has about 12 stitches. We have had many, many meetings with the landlords and they said to just get a grip and to just deal with, with life. That's what they tell us. We finally had a big conversation and we said, the website and, and, and everything about this project is a bad. This is a smoke-free building. So I said, now that, you know, we know all of this, we need to go and talk to the mayor's office. So we went to his office twice and they never called us, so we can talk to him. We are to the point now where they wanna evict Jonathan with his mom and send him to some building somewhere where the smoking and the marijuana is worse over there. We already went to see the building. So Jonathan doesn't have a voice. Mommy is the voice. I'm also the president and founder of the U.S. Women's Grocers Association in the U.S. and I am an advocate for women and children. So yes, I've been down for the last few years because of the incident, but I, my goal is to go back to work. So with these conditions that we have in that building, we're not able to function, to have equality of life. So they moved the area for the smokers just a few feet away from the doors, but the smoke goes into the house or into the building, no matter what they do. Jonathan, Claudia, and myself are the only three that don't smoke in that building. Everybody else has drugs, alcohol, and smoking. So we say, why is it that they put us in here? I think that everyone has to be placed in a special place accordingly. I go to my programs all throughout the week, she goes to her program, Jonathan goes to his programs. Everybody else the whole entire week is just drinking, smoking, and partying the whole entire week. And the weekend is even worse. So the police force, they have been very, very helpful to us, you know, to go over there and stop the, the noise. So we're here tonight, I'm here tonight in regards to Jonathan, which is my main concern. I can defend myself, she can defend herself. Jonathan doesn't have a voice. So we are, our aims right now, where this is becoming very, very emotional and also very painful because nobody's listening. They wanna evict Jonathan with his mom. And also mommy, because she's been fighting very, very hard with the landlord and with everybody else, mommy had a heart accident. So now she's in really bad shape and she's Jonathan's strength. So we're trying to help her as much as we can, United States, me and her family, because, you know, she had a horrible car accident. And, you know, because she got into an argument with the people there at the building. So I think that things are escalating to a point where it's becoming a health hazard for everybody. I'm not saying that we don't want the people there. We're not discriminating anybody, but I really think that we need to have a safer environment. And also the people that are there, especially the administrators in, in, at the Zebra Way, they need to really take into consideration that in secondhand smoking, whether it's cigarettes or marijuana, the study shows that it's worse than firsthand smoking. So they agree with us, saying that it's not. And I have had nothing but really bad health issues since I'm not there because of the smoke. So anyways, I think tonight what we want is to know if we can have a meeting, a private meeting with one of the agencies that you guys will recommend, so we can tell you the check on the dates for the past nine months, to tell you exactly what we've done, where we are, and also to become to a resolution. I don't think that the solution to evict Jonathan from there is the right thing to do.
Okay, well, Captain Miller has the, the address and everything, so he'll be working on that. Again, with you, the police. Who else do we have in the city that might be able to, to at least work with them in some way, shape, or form?
Uh, our department heavily subsidizes this project and I'm in constant contact with the developers and property managers and I can...
You can take care of it.
I can tell you, yeah, I can touch base with them and go from there.
The police department has been very, very, very helpful, as well as, as the fire department as well. But we have to call them at least two, three times a day.
Okay, just need calling.
And I think it's, it's a waste of taxpayers' money calling everybody.
Captain Miller can turn that, to make us take care of that.
I just wanna ask just to remind me, who is the landlord?
I'm sorry?
The landlord, who's the management company?
That's, uh, in a bit. Who are the people that you're talking to? It's CCC, Coming Home, and I forget the other one. Oh, United Way.
Who have you been talking to? Have you been talking, have you approached Coming Home? Have you approached?
All of them.
All of them?
All of them, yes. Today we had a meeting, a community meeting. Right from the get-go, when I met the mayor there, when he went to visit us, I told him, I am very excited about the project. I said, I'm very, very happy that I'm here. I said, we're gonna build some community pride in this place and start building up our lives. And when I met her, I had hope. When I met Jonathan, he became my strength. But after everything that is happening, it's like, okay, where do we go? Where, where do we go?
So I'll just say, Captain Miller knows about it. Maybe we'll take care of you right after the meeting here and talk to you. She said, okay.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else in public?
Who's from Jared?
Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council vice president, Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Council president, Anderson?
Yeah, yeah.